Council meeting, it's one o'clock. We're gonna have our prayer given by Pastor Keith Higgins of the First Missionary Baptist Church, and then we're gonna have our prayers given through Council McCroon, so I ask everyone to stand, please.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come right now asking for your guidance, your leadership. We pray for your wisdom. We stand on leaning not on our own understanding, but always considering your word. Father God, if we stand on your word, unity will be at the forefront. Fellowship, camaraderie, bond, and harmony will be our very fiber that we are built on. Father God, we ask you to impart your wisdom that each man and woman must lead and guide in the way that they should go. Father God, bind us together, that we have a sense of trust and support. Father God, let us put our differences aside, and that we may be on one accord, that if we are on one accord, then we will be able to give you glory, and we will reap the benefits. Bless every community, every home, every individual, every business, every citizens of this community. And Father God, as new people come into our community, let us stand on the very essence of who we are. Thank you for our past, thank you for our present, and Father God, see us through our future. We pray for wisdom right now, to lead and guide us from one degree to another. And Lord, if we do this in your name, we'll be so careful to give you all praise, all honor, and all glory. It's in the mighty name of Jesus we pray. Amen, and thank God.
Amen.
Remain standing and listen. Face the flag for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You can get your seats.
I'm going to call this meeting to order, and I ask our city clerk, Ms. Joplin, will you please call the roll?
Mayor McLendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suda Junior.
Here.
Councilor Crum.
Here.
Councilor Bruce.
Here.
Councilor Cat.
Here.
Councilor Harris.
Councilor Holt.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Councilor Mohammed.
Present.
Councilor Monday.
Here.
Councilor Mary.
Here.
We got seven out of nine, this president. We had no bid openings. Were there any corrections to our minutes?
Motion to approve is submitted.
Second.
All favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes are approved. We're gonna go down to our old bid, the city attorney.
Old business, this third reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 1600 East Broadway Avenue, permitting a car dealership in a downtown mixed-use two-zone, DTM U-2.
That is being read for the third and final time. We had the young man who owns the car lot that spoke at our last council meeting. Ms. Felix is here. Did you all wanna hear that last request, or did you all have any questions for?
I would like for them.
Go ahead.
Ms. Felix to get up and kinda summarize again what was discussed at our last meeting, if she'd mind.
Good afternoon, council. So, this special use was based on the condition of Mr. Jason closing the current car lot that he has. As you know, according to our newly adopted ordinance development code, car dealerships are prohibited in the downtown mixed-use zoning area. So that's why we were allowing him, through special use, to use this new property as a car lot, but closing the current one.
Now, Ms. Felix, if we were not to use that particular location as a car lot, I know it's just sitting there now empty, what else could that property be used for?
Any other business, pretty much. Any other business.
Seems like it's pretty well equipped for a car lot. Is there a showing?
It was once a car lot.
Yeah, it was once a car lot, I remember.
And that's no problem, but we're trying to eliminate car lots, dealerships altogether. So allowing him to have two would kinda be defeating the purpose.
If council were to approve this today, he would be required to close the one down there on down further on Broadway.
That is the condition.
I do know where it is.
Yes.
As I said at the last meeting when he was here, I really, I don't have a problem with it, but I'm only one vote, and I believe he was saying that he's gonna have more like high-end cars there to sell. I think, I remember him saying that. Which one is he? Oh, I thought that, I thought that was you. You did say that, didn't you? Yeah, I have a pretty good memory. Okay.
I've got, I've got one question. It may be a, it's probably a legal question, but could there be, could it be revised, and we could put a condition in there that says, when that car lot on the, I guess I'm talking to the city attorney, like a moratorium that if that car lot closes, for whatever reason, down in the future, then there would be no car lot, couldn't go back there. In other words, he could keep it open until it, for some reason, it closes. I'm not talking about, I'm talking about revising it, not changing it.
You wanna say something?
I mean, the only reason you would.
Revision. Well, what I was, what I was, I guess I was getting at was kinda like a grandfather clause, once somebody's grandfathered in.
I think after, after it's been closed.
He is now a legal non-conforming.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's already grandfathered in.
He's already grandfathered in. So my question is, do you wanna get rid of him, or do you not wanna get rid of him?
I have a question. I have a question, Ms. Felix. Where is he located now?
He's right at, right beside the library. What's that address?
480 East Broadway.
480 East Broadway, right at the railroad track.
Okay. And I'm asking that question because we have a lot of car lots in that area, and they are not conforming to what our ordinance say. They have a lot of junk cars, and that's part of War II. And you know, I've been complaining, and across the street from where he's trying to go to, we're having issues.
With Tiffany's.
With Tiffany's and, from 14th, 15th Street. And 16th.
Yes.
So, I have a problem with it, because they are not, they're keeping junk cars there, they're not trying to clean up, and so I have an issue with it.
Speaking on his behalf, his car lot is really neat and tidy.
He's right about, right about the library.
Right.
Okay.
But the point of it is, we're trying to eliminate car dealerships to adhere to our development code.
I won't support.
So to allow him to do two car lots would be defeating the purpose of our development code.
You're representing the 2040 development plan that council approved?
Yes. Yes.
Can I say something? I know where his car lot is right now? It's not, somebody's car lot? Okay, fine. On the other end, on 14, 15, 16, 17, we got, this sits on the grass.
Terrible.
Oh, everywhere. We are trying to clean that up, I thought, all the way down to there.
Yes, we are.
We are.
Terrible.
We trying to clean that up.
And as they leave, we don't wanna put them back.
And the people that left that, is there, for some reason?
And they still have stuff there.
They still got stuff there. With something else there.
Well, I guess to get back to the point, 1600 would be cleaned by its previous experience. It's the fact, do you wanna have two, which is in violation of the 2040 plan that this council approved? Or conflict with the plan?
So he's moving voluntarily to this location? So if he stays where he is, what's, what's the problem with staying? I mean, I understand people want to move.
He wants to.
No, I can't, I can't support that.
He wants to.
I don't know if it's too, I think he's enlarging his operation, that's not suitable.
He wants to.
I understand, but the reason for leaving 480 Broadway is because of its size, so he went to 1600, which is a much bigger lot.
It's a much bigger lot.
Which personally, I think is.
For higher-end vehicles, however, he will, that car lot will remain open.
I believe 1600 is large enough to run both operations.
I believe so, but.
Higher-end than other cars.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
So we are voting now to give him a special use permit just for that lot on 16th Street in lieu of him closing the one down further down on Broadway. Is that what the vote is calling for?
Yes.
Oh, he's not, he's not going to close the one down on, oh, okay.
Did you wanna address?
I'd like to, if possible.
Now, the 460, 480, just make sure I understand, was part of the condition of this approval, that it would be used for other purpose other than a car lot?
Yes, in the last meeting, I think we spoke about me, I know that that was the condition. We should have, they said they would allow it if I closed down the 480 East Broadway. And my, my, I was wanting to just kinda let you guys know that, you know, if I closed it down, there's really nothing 480 East Broadway can be. It can be a restaurant and a few other, like, interior retail sales, but no exterior sales, so I'm afraid that it would sit empty, just like 1800, I mean, 1600 East Broadway has been empty for about 18 months now. And I believe that would be the same case with the lot that I have now, is that it would sit empty, just like the Red Barn and many other, you know, things in that area. And I was just hoping that you guys would, you know, allow me to, you know, expand and open another lot to have higher-end vehicles, and still, you know, keep the reputation we have at our current lot, and have it there as well, and try to clean up that 14, 15, and 1600 block of Broadway. We run a nice operation, and we'd love to do it there, and we, you know, hate to see it sit empty, 'cause it has for so long, and it's just going downhill, downhill. It's already, I've had contractors look at it, and it's already gonna take a lot of money just to get it back up to speed to be what it was originally built to be in the 80s. And that's kinda my case, guys. Thank y'all.
So, when you say high-end cars, what type of cars are you talking about?
Well, it would just be, you know, cars that are a little bit nicer than the ones we're selling now, you know, newer, lower miles, offering other finance opportunities that we cannot operate, I mean, that we cannot offer with what we're offering now. You can't run the two different types of finance companies out of the same business. It is conflict.
City Attorney, do you mind giving a little feedback on that? I know we do have the law, and that's what we have to adhere to.
Well, the council can do what it wants to do about allowing the special permitted use, but, you know, you wouldn't be following the recommendation of the planning commission, and it sounds like the recommendation of Ms. Felix and her department as well. I understand what he's trying to do, and I think, you know, it's not a bad idea, you're cleaning up another piece of property, but if that's the condition, that's the condition. Now, of course, the council can take the condition off and approve it anyway. You don't have to just approve what the planning commission has recommended, you can do something other than that, so it's up to the council.
Well, I think we should follow the recommendation of the planning commission. If we're truly trying to clean up our city, and we definitely need to move across the south side of Broadway, and start enforcing that as well. But if we're gonna clean up the city as they, as the planning commission has set forth, I don't think we should support it. And like I said, I only have one vote, but being the council person for War II, we have a mess, so I'm just, I'm totally against it. And y'all know, I've been coming to the meetings, and this is all I've been talking about. So I'm asking, y'all not supporting, I'm asking for you to follow the guidance of the planning commission.
So, Mr. Attorney, can you define, give us a clear definition of what a yes vote is, and what a no vote would be?
A yes vote would mean you would agree to allow the special permitted use with the condition that other businesses close.
Okay.
A no vote means you don't even wanna consider that.
Is there any other discussion? Can I get a motion in second?
What, is, so there's, I know that they said that I was allowed to, you know, bring up, you know, my point, is there no way that it's possible for me to have the vote? Is that can't be voted on?
Well, it's about to.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, is there a motion in a second?
Make a motion to approve the ordinance that's presented.
Is there?
Second.
All right, will you call the roll?
Councilor Crum. Councilor Bruce.
No.
What was, what was?
He didn't say anything.
I'm thinking, I'll pass for now, but I'll pick it up on the back end.
If you vote no, that means it doesn't pass.
If you vote yes, he'll have the one lot at 1600, but 480 will no longer be a car lot, it can be used for other purposes.
And if I vote no, it doesn't pass, period. No.
Councilor Cat.
Yes.
Councilor Holt.
Yes.
Councilor Mohammed.
Yes.
Councilor Monday.
No.
Councilor Mary.
Four yeses. Four yeses, one no, and one, two no's in the possibility.
Did you wanna vote, council?
I do wanna vote, I'm gonna vote. No.
Motion, yes.
Three no's.
All right, so that motion, it fails. Stop right there.
So, to be clear, there's only, the 480 would be in business, 1600 would still be available for sale, or leased to another, another tenant.
On the third item of business, I would ask that we table that indefinitely. I get a motion, second, table it indefinitely.
Second.
All favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's tabled. All right, we're gonna go down to new business, but also, I'm gonna ask that, I get a motion in second to add the two resolutions, charity day funds, and the par request. Also, I wanna add with the par request, the contractor they wanted you just called back and said he will match the lowest bid.
All right, so you're wishing to add R9 and R10 to the agenda?
Yes.
With two commission requests?
Yeah, the charity day.
Okay, now, he said he would match, do you have anything in writing, or it's just a gentleman's handshake on that?
Well, can't we just postpone the one until we get the information that?
I mean, however you all would like to, to.
I think it's a time crunch for the.
I apologize.
I'm sorry, I think it's a time crunch, because you're wanting the restrooms complete by a certain length of time, is that right, Director Jones? So, we don't want to postpone it, because then they wouldn't meet their deadline, Councilor Crum.
Well, then, when we get to that point, can we have Mr. Jones come up and explain what's going on, because?
Sure, sure, I happen to come up. Well, we end this resolution, nine and 10, charity days.
Distribution.
Distribution, and the par request. I get a motion in second for that?
So moved.
All favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's added. Now. Ms. Mohammed, will you give me that, and we did by title.
He gave me a big, he gave me a big piece of homework. Yes, sir, I would like to make a motion that R1, R2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and they added, did we add 9 and 10 already? And 9 and 10, and also O1 and O2 be read by title only.
I get a second.
Second.
All favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's added. And the city attorney?
All right. Here we go. R1 is a resolution authorizing the city clerk to execute and submit the relevant electric retail regulatory authority verification letter on behalf of the city of West Memphis concerning red wagon, combined cycle glass turbine, and requesting an expedited resource study.
I get a motion in second.
No moves.
And discussion?
If you'll explain that, I picked up my agenda kinda late, and I only had a chance to just glance over.
Can we have Bob come up?
I promise to give you a hard time.
I would expect nothing less, though. So what, what this resolution is about is, because of the impending closure of coal-fired power plants, the MISO, which is the Mid-Continent Independent System Operator, has what they call an expedited resource analysis study, adequacy study, sorry. Right now, if you wanna bring a power plant online, when MISO looks at the resource adequacy, it takes about four years from when you submit that to where you can actually interconnect into the transmission grid. Under the expedited resource adequacy study, it's only offered to municipal utilities, and they had 63 expedited spots. If we can submit need as the city of West Memphis, we can get one of those spots for an expedited resource study. So Next Era Energy is looking to build a combined-cycle natural gas plant, and they're working with the five municipals that are in MISO's territory. That's the city of West Memphis, the city of Jonesboro, the city of Conway, North Little Rock, and Benton. All five of those municipals are doing the same thing so that, and basically what we're saying is, is that we have a need for additional generation in Arkansas to serve our customers, and if we submit this letter, we will get into the queue for an expedited study. And it'll cut about two years off of the study, and Next Era Energy is actually going to pay the application fees and the costs associated with the study for that. So that's the purpose of the resolution. As, since city council is the regulatory authority and that responsible for West Memphis utilities, it has to come from city council.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, you might wanna just stay up there, though, 'cause the next one, it's gonna be.
Yeah, I have one more, but if you.
Yeah, you might wanna just stand there till we vote, 'cause you're gonna be right back up there.
Sure.
Were there any other discussion on this particular item? Okay, hearing none, all the favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passed. Will you get a resolution number, please?
Resolution number 2333. 2333.
That number, 2333. R2?
R2 is a resolution declaring the intent of the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, to issue public utility system revenue bonds, and to reimburse itself from the proceeds of such bonds for certain expenditures, and prescribing other matters relating thereto.
All right, hearing that, Ray, can I get a motion in second?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion on this one? He's already at the mic. Okay, go ahead, Bob.
Sure. So what this resolution is for is, as we've talked about before, West Memphis Utilities or the city of West Memphis is co-owner in two coal-fired power plants that are scheduled to close. One's closing at the end of '28, the other's closing at the end of '30. To replace that generation, we are partnering with two other municipals and a cooperative to build new generation, and to build that generation, we will have to make progress payments through the construction period. Our goal is to have that generation come online by the time the last coal-fired power plant, which is the independent steam station, when it closes on 1231 of 2030, we plan to turn the independence gas on. So we need to start construction on it now, and there will be progress payments as we go. West Memphis's share of that new power plant will be 2% of the new power plant, and our cost allocation for that will be roughly about $45 million. So this is the first bond issue to begin with those progress payments for the construction of that new plant.
Is there any other discussion, or questions?
Bob?
Yes.
Are we gonna still have lower rates like we do now?
Well, I don't wanna mislead anyone, right? So we are, we have an RFP out right now to, to do a cost of service study, so our rates, all our rates are for is cost recovery of all of our expenses, including our generation cost. So as we issue bonds to build a new power plant in the amount of $45 million, we're gonna have to pay for that some way, right? We're also closing two plants that were built, one was built in the late 70s, the other was built in the early 80s. So, I can't say no that we're not gonna raise rates, but our goal is to not raise rates, or to only raise rates as, as much as we can to cover our costs. With that being said, you know, city council, back in the late 70s and early 80s, they had enough foresight to buy ownership interest in those two plants. The three lowest-cost providers in the state of Arkansas are the city of West Memphis, the city of Jonesboro, and the city of Conway, and those three municipals are also the three that own, ownership, have ownership interest in those two plants. The same will apply when we have ownership interest in the new combined-cycle natural gas plant. That will be able, that will enable us to keep our rates stable, keep our costs low over the next 40 to 50 years, just like happened in the late 70s. Our anticipation is the same thing's gonna happen now. So, the other thing to keep in mind is, I would say that we're on the front end of the wave. Across the United States, coal-fired power plants are closing, right? I mean, it's, it's in the news, and so we are, we are working now because our plants are closing, but we're kinda on the front end of that wave. So our costs are gonna be lower, and as more and more plants close, everyone's rates are gonna go up across the United States. So we'll still be, even if our rates go up, we will still be one of the lowest-cost providers in the state.
The 21 million, of course, is being repaid from the proceeds generated.
I'm sorry, what was the first part?
The 21 million is being repaid from the proceeds of the operating system, not necessarily at the utility department.
Correct. That will be, so that will be, the debt service for that bond issue will be covered by utility rates.
And switching to this system, of course, Cole, you had to switch, you didn't have a choice, but going with this natural gas is one of the most cost-effective systems that are out there.
It is. So, there's a requirement, we wanna have what we call base load generation. So when we talk about base load generation, that's generation that regardless of what's happening in the environment, whether the sun's shining, or the wind's blowing, that generation can produce electricity, and so we need base load generation, because our customers don't only use electric when the sun's shining, right? So we do have some solar, some of the renewables, it's unreliable, but natural gas, short of hydro or nuclear, is the most reliable, lowest-cost base load generation that we can get out there.
And the natural gas contract. And the natural gas contracts are already in hand.
So there's capacity, so AECC, the Arkansas Electric Cooperative Corp., they will be the operator of the new plant, and they are currently negotiating gas supply contracts and capacity on the gas pipelines to serve the new plant.
And they'll own fifty, how much was their percentage of ownership?
They will own, they'll own right about seventy-five percent of the plant.
Do you foresee or have knowledge of expansion in the solar output and installation of those windmill generators in our area?
Yes, so currently, right now, there's a moratorium on renewables in Crittenton County. I do not anticipate that's gonna continue, I think it's set to expire in November, is that right? I think it's November. That wasn't, that really didn't have anything to do other than they were trying to get regulation in place to kind of, to how, how they were gonna handle permitting and oversight on these solar fields and wind generation. And then, you know, at end of life, how we were gonna dispose of those facilities if they were no longer in use. But that being said, there are plans in Crittenton County right now to, to build more solar when, when they could do that, and to bu, build more wind. Wind is a nice fit with solar because wind is more prevalent at night, right? And wind is more prevalent in the winter, which the winter is solar's lowest generation period. So it, it's kind of a nice fit, they mix well together. And the idea would be to have a diversified portfolio of generation where you have a certain percentage of base load, and then you have renewables, solar, wind, and battery, to where you would still have market exposure because of the unreliability of the renewables, but you would, you would significantly limit that exposure, and it would not be, you would not have the price volatility because you would have long-term purchase contracts for those renewables. And you would only have to be reliant on market resources when the renewables were not producing.
Will the, will our city buy into those like we did the solars? I think we own fifteen percent output, or?
We, we get twenty megawatts of output of energy out of Big Cypress, and we have a hundred megawatts of capacity that comes out of Big Cypress. We will, we're continually working with and negotiating with solar providers, we have, and, and wind providers as those gener, as generation resources come online. The idea would be to sign a long-term contract or a long-time term power purchase agreement, and then have that locked in for a, a twenty-five to thirty-year period so that we will know what our prices is, we can budget what our energy costs are, and we can keep rates stable over that time period.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Were there any other questions? Hearing none, all the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, will you get that, uh, resolution number, please?
Resolution number twenty-three thirty-four, twenty-three thirty-four.
That number is twenty-three thirty-four. We move down to R three?
R three is a resolution to approve the sales agreement between the City of West Memphis, Arkansas, and Martha Clark, and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreements and sign deeds on behalf of the City of West Memphis.
I get a motion in second.
So moved.
In discussion.
Can just, I guess clarification that the.
Ms. Felix?
Ms. Felix.
Property owner, that the, the individual buying this piece of property is also the adjacent property owner.
Ms. Felix.
She's nodding her head. I think, Ms. Felix, you may not be up here very long because I think Mr. Counselor Cat just answered part of my question.
Okay.
But, 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 there's always a but, gotta get to a but.
I'm here for the buts, so what we got?
Do we, it, what is the procedure for people that want to buy a city-owned residential lot? I mean, do they have to submit a request, or?
We did. Danielle? I'll let Danielle explain.
Okay, and, and the other part of that question is, so that it, to me, so that it's, it's fair, do we publicize these, these properties for purchase?
They were.
They were?
She will explain the process that we went through.
Good afternoon. The process for the lot, during our reclaim renewed initiative, these were lots that were purchased by the city. It was posted, and the lots were made available to the entire public, everyone knew about them. However, we had very few people, well, I won't say very few people, we had a plethora of people that actually sent in email contacts to our former director, Chad Baum, who then split up the responsibility to myself as well as Ms. Felix. And with those people were then contacted with two, um, two objectives. Either you were labeled as a advanced developer or you were labeled as an investor. If you were investor, you were somebody that was just looking to purchase the lot for yourself. If you are advanced developer, we were looking to use you as far as for our Broadway Park area, which we are looking to develop that specific area. Those then were given a, they were sent a application, the job form application. After they were, get the application, they were given a deadline to turn in the application. Once I received the application, we then began to go through each application by a first come, first served basis for those who submitted which lot that they were interested in. After that, we then contact the individuals and let them know that they were awarded the lot. We let them know what the process will be with them. If they were interested in receiving the lot, they will go through a purchase agreement. We let them know that these, what they were selling for most were, I believe, between fifteen hundred dollars that we were getting for the lot. So, we basically, people knew. We then came back with another post letting everybody know, this is a second deadline. That way, everyone had a chance and opportunity to know about what was taking place. And so now this brings us to our current state where we are now.
When you say it's posted, is it posted on the city website?
City website.
Or is it just in the paper, the local newspaper?
No, city website posted, we was posted as well as on our social media pages. It was also posted around, we got several calls in, so it was also word of mouth. And people that wanted to know information were contacting myself directly, as well as Ms. Felix.
Also was broadcasting on the news as well.
Yes.
Well, I was just, I was just curious, this, how that process, I knew there was a process, I just didn't know the details of the process. It's kind of like, uh, delinquent taxes. They put all that in the paper, so you, you know that all these people didn't pay their taxes, personal property taxes, whatever.
Yes, sir.
But thank y'all for explaining that.
So, most of these, these were scattered sites.
Right.
Most of them have been spoken for. The ones that haven't, we're going to repost them.
Okay.
Reannounce them, so anybody that's interested in them will be able to claim those lots if they want them.
I just, I guess I, I must be a little confused, Martha Clark is the one selling the property?
No, she's purchasing the property.
Okay, well, who is, who is Franklin and Franklin and Franklin Investment, who is that?
Franklin and Franklin.
What, what part do they play in this?
They're purchasing a property as well.
No.
The same property?
Where are we at?
No, that's the resolution that you amended.
Okay, you didn't get a corrected copy, okay.
I have.
There was a typo on that initial resolution, and it's been cited.
So this, the one that I'm looking at is Martha White one?
The, in the second paragraph, the mention of Franklin.
Patricia.
Has been stricken, and Martha, uh, Clark has been inserted in her, in that place.
That was just a mistake?
Yes. None of the resolutions.
With the big writing, one of these right here. I'll just let me, uh, so I won't get confused again. Because I was trying to figure out how, are all those names involved?
I didn't know what you were looking at, okay, yeah.
I was looking at the one that's not correct.
My, my error, I'm sorry.
If I may, of course, none of these indicate a sales price. Now, you mentioned fifteen hundred dollars.
That was the appraisal value, yeah.
The requirement was that the city would recoup its cost of the initial purchase plus the last four years of mowing, and you're comfortable fifteen hundred dollars covers our cost.
Yes, and they are responsible for all closing costs and all of that, title searches, they, they are responsible for that.
Okay, but each one of these are at that fifteen hundred dollar price range?
Yes.
Thank you.
If I may, just, we, we just discussed earlier, on these twenty-five foot lots, you know, a lot of people think you can't build on twenty-five foot lot. Uh, but you already have plans and drawings on what some of these will be done.
We're looking at more like just shotgun houses, but you can go up, you can go up, so.
Yeah, because I was finna say, there have been people building on twenty-five foot lots.
Yeah.
Oh, they are, but more times than not, they're not stick-framed, they're manufactured housing of some type, not what people think of in the old days. But it's still wood-framed, stick-framed housing, it's just brought in and erected.
Not all of them.
Did you drive over there lately, Tracy, those are some nice shotgun houses, I've seen them, they're really nice.
Oh, they are, but, I mean, they're saying, a lot of them are pre-manufactured structures and then assembled on site.
Yeah, they have to meet setbacks, and they have to meet, yeah.
So if you got a twenty-five foot lot sitting on the corner, and you got to sit back.
Ten feet.
Ten feet, that's a fifteen foot lot.
No, ma'am.
To build on.
If I may.
So you can't build on that, can you?
No, it's twenty-five foot wide, but it's a hundred forty-five feet deep.
The depth, it's, it's deep.
So the depth is, they have plenty of room, this particular lot's a hundred forty-five feet deep.
It's, it's with, but they are deep.
Yeah.
So they can go back and meet all the side rear as well as front.
If it's sitting on the corner, it's still gonna go back.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank y'all, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Were there any other questions for them? Ms. Merlin, Ms. Danielle? I think I'm gonna need you all for three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's it, it's pretty much the same procedure though, but.
Same thing, um.
But, hold on, were there any more questions on, on that one? Opposed, R three?
Do you want to do this a mass vote?
Oh, yeah, I can't do a mass vote. All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's passed, we'll move down, uh, get that, uh, resolution number, please?
Resolution number twenty-three thirty-five, twenty-three thirty-five.
Two-three-three-five, we move down to R four?
R four is a resolution to approve the sales agreements between the City of West Memphis, Arkansas, and John Edwards, and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreements and sign deeds on behalf of the City of West Memphis.
I get a motion in second to approve. In discussion on that one? Hearing none, all the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Get that number, the resolution number, please?
Twenty-three thirty-six, twenty-three thirty-six.
That number is two-three-three-six, R five?
R five is a resolution to approve the sales agreements between the City of West Memphis, Arkansas, and Terrence White, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreements and sign deeds on behalf of the City of West Memphis.
I get a motion in second.
So moved.
Second, in discussion. Hearing none, all the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, get that number, please?
Twenty-three thirty-seven, twenty-three thirty-seven.
That number is two-three-three-seven, R six?
R six is a resolution to approve the sales agreement between the City of West Memphis, Arkansas, and Regina Boyd, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreements and sign deeds on behalf of the City of West Memphis.
I get a motion in second.
So moved.
Second, in discussion. Hearing none, all the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, will you get that number, please?
Twenty-three thirty-eight, twenty-three thirty-eight.
That number is two-three-three-eight. R seven?
R seven is a resolution to approve the sales agreements between the City of West Memphis, Arkansas, and Donald Brown, and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreements and sign deeds on behalf of the City of West Memphis.
I get a motion in second.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion. Hearing none, all the, that, that passes, uh, all the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, will you give them, R seven, a number?
Twenty-three thirty-nine, twenty-three thirty-nine.
That number is two-three-three-nine, um, R eight?
R eight is a resolution.
Can I say something on R seven, where is it located at? Location?
He has five properties.
And, and Ms. Felix, let me ask this question, everyone who's, is getting these properties, they do have the understanding that they need to be building, we just not stop piling property. I just wanted to kind of clear that up.
They were listed, they, they were listed on the resolutions.
Yeah.
Yeah, the address is posted there.
Yeah, there are five lots, each of them are basically twenty-five by one forty-five.
So we're voting on all of these lots that, on this resolution, all these lots?
Yeah, that, that's for R eight.
Mm-hmm, for Donald, uh, Donald Brown.
Fifteen hundred dollars per lot.
Yeah. I just wanted to be clear to this council that, I did want to be clear that, uh, that they are building because I don't want next year, we are cutting these lots, we're in the same situation that we in, so. They need to have some plans for them, and they've, they've been making clear that, and it's clear.
We do have a couple of purchased lots that were located, like five of them, and they have been maintaining the lots for years. When they came available, they, they spoke to us.
The very first lot was next, she already owned the property next door to, she just simply wanted to maintain. And, uh, R eight is the same way.
So R eight is what I'm about to read, are we ready for that?
You read that one, I think.
I didn't read it yet, R eight.
Oh, no.
R eight is a resolution to approve the sales agreements between the City of West Memphis, Arkansas, and Bernard Ross, and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreements and sign deeds on behalf of the City of West Memphis.
I get a motion in second.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion of those. Hearing none, all the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, will you get that resolution number?
Twenty-three forty, resolution number twenty-three forty.
That number is two-three-four-zero. R nine?
R nine is a resolution authorizing the mayor to engage in and submit a new grantee request to the Federal Transit Administration.
I want to give you all the information about that. Many of you all met Ms. Bakara Malden, who's here. We've been working on trying to get public transportation for the City of West Memphis. I've been working closely with Governor Sanders, who has been a big help with this, as well as R D. And what, on this personal ordinance is, no, I'm sorry, not ordinance, resolution, what she was done, is stop the portion of our funds that were going to Memphis, Tennessee. And she stopped that money from going there. So in order for West Memphis, our MPO, to receive it, we have to be designated, as a designated, designee, to receive those funds. And part of that would be the second ordinance, uh, where we would have to create a transit department, but we don't have to pay any funds, so they're just part of the requirements. And we have, Ms. Malden, if you have any questions for her, I'll have her to come up to, be making the way. And I thank the Governor and R D for doing this for us, because for the last, since we have a head of bus service, that head overhead for me now that's been going to another place.
So, good afternoon to the mayor and the council. My name is Bakara Malden, and I've been working with the administration on trying to discover or discuss the feasibility of recreating an independent transit system for the citizens of West Memphis. We've talked to citizens, business owners all over the city over the last few months, and all of them have talked about the importance and the need for public transit. And so you all are very lucky to have the support of Governor Huckabee Sanders, who really wants to see this happen, especially in light of the recent announcements and other things that are on the horizon. The number one concern of a lot of entities when they locate to this area is how are people gonna have access to all these opportunities? And so this is, this resolution is the first big step in securing that funding, as well as any additional funding that may come available directly from the federal programs. And so in order to become the recipient of those funds, we have to do two things, two major things in the midst of all this. One, we have to apply to the Federal Transit Administration to become a new grantee. And so the first resolution is basically authorizing to mayor, the mayor to execute any documents associated with that. The important thing to remember about that is as a direct recipient of the transit, from the Transit Administration, that allows you all to chart the course in terms of what this community needs. Uh, right now, uh, you know, we had transit here back in twenty eighteen, and it was as a sub-recipient under the Transit Authority. Uh, right now, uh, you know, we had transit here back in twenty-eighteen, and it was as a sub-recipient under the Transit Authority over in Memphis. Now, of course, we love our neighbors in Memphis, however, probably the only thing in common with the transit needs over there is the word Memphis. This community is unique, this community has its own things that it needs in order to make sure that its citizens have access. And so creating an independent transit system and becoming that direct recipient will put you all in the driver's seat to determine what is needed for this community to thrive and survive. And so the second ordinance, well, the second resolution basically creates the framework, because before the Transit Administration will send funds here, you have to have the infrastructure in place in order to receive that. And so this, that is the second step of being able to receive those funds. So, and I'll entertain any questions that you all have, that's just a, a brief introduction, uh, to the process, and this is, this is a process, this is something that we'll be working with you all through the process of doing that, but these are the first two critical steps in order to be able to receive this and other federal funds.
Uh, I don't have any questions, but I think this is, would be good for our city, because we see the problems that, uh, they're having in Memphis with, with Matter. And so I think it's about time for us to, to really look at trying to be our own independent, uh, provider, and I think it would be great for, for the City of West Memphis.
About how much money are we talking about, because I see here it says the city council shall provide for the funding of the department through the annual budget process.
Right, we, this, this particular resolution creates the entity, and a budget will be brought forward through the normal budget process. So this, this particular resolution does not have any funding attached to it, it creates the entity so that it can be included in the next budget discussion, and so a budget will be forthcoming. But transit is not just providing, just funded through city funds, again, I've been instructed to, to look at grants to help fund it, we've gone down to Little Rock and talked to the folks at R dot. We do know from them that there is a pot of money that they distribute to transit entities throughout the state, but you have to have, again, the infrastructure in place in order to be incorporated into that funding. And so all of those revenue sources will be, uh, considered, uh, once the mayor brings a budget proposal during, again, the normal budget process.
So now, if city council were to pass these res- resolutions today, about how long do you think, uh, it will take before we really pick this ball up and for it to stop rolling?
Well, the ball is already rolling.
The ball is rolling, but how long will it take for it to stop and we actually pick it up and say, go?
For literally the rubber to meet the road, basically. Uh, it really, it, it, honestly, it really depends, uh, there are a lot of things that we're looking at, we need to do some more community engagement, because we don't just wanna put something out there and speak for the citizens, we wanna get out there and talk to the residents. And a lot of that will inform the direction that we go. Through technology, there are a lot of ways we can go, we can look at micro-transit, we can look at fixed route, but we wanna hear from the people, and we, the first thing, once the department is started, that will empower us to go ahead and start the community engagement process, so that then we can come back before this body and talk to you about what we've heard from the community, and make recommendations about the direction we plan to go in.
Right, I guess I was just trying to get like a deadline if constituents were to ask about when do you think we'll have this bus service, that's basically what I was driving at.
Well, and I understand, and we, basically, it could be as soon as next summer, but it could be as long as a couple of years from now, because there is an extensive planning process that goes, that goes along with it, and it depends on the amount of funding that we're able to frankly get in order to fund the endeavor. And so, but we will continue to communicate, uh, with this body along the way, we will communicate with the public, public engagement is also a required part of this process, and so we look forward to even hearing your input on what your thoughts are, uh, about what would be the best way to, to serve your constituents.
Also, I did wanna quickly add that this, these recommendations did come from the governor and R dot, so it's not just West Memphis, it's the state level.
Real quick question. Real quick, um, earlier in your conversation, you mentioned that a portion of the funding for us was going to Memphis. Will this?
Teresa Harris.
Stop that from doing that?
Yes.
But, but when does the funding come out?
So, what happens is we have what is called an urbanized, I'm sorry, an urbanized area, the, the Memphis urbanized area, and technically, West Memphis falls in the Memphis urbanized area. Right now, uh, the Memphis Transit Authority is the designated recipient?
Right.
For all of those funds.
Okay.
Governor, um, Huckabee Sanders has now sent a letter basically saying, I want all the Arkansas funding, even that, that's in the urbanized area? To serve the citizens of Arkansas. And so basically, but you have to have an entity for it to go into.
Exactly.
And so this creates the entity for the funding to come into, and so basically by establishing that entity, we would be able to work with Matter and, and the Federal Transit Administration, and get those fundings coming directly here to fund the West Memphis transit system.
Thank you.
And I hope that answers your, your question.
That is, thank you. They're not gonna make it retroactive, so.
Hey, I asked that question.
Fortunately.
By the fact that R dot, they told us that, they really owe y'all about three point nine million dollars, but I've been working, I've been waiting on Mary yelling to give me a call, so, he ain't called me yet.
Yeah, I figured it wouldn't be retroactive.
But at least it will protect the funding from this year going forward.
Exactly.
And give us something to work with as we try to provide a transportation solution for West Memphis.
Now, wh- wh- before we get the funding started, will we have to have a complete transportation department and all of this stuff running, or can?
Well, we're hoping to do it in a parallel, if you will, um, we have to actually get the structure started, because they need to know that if they're sending this money down here, we're actually providing the transit service. And so again, that's why this is so important to do that.
Thank you again.
Oh, thank you.
Well, well, yeah, definitely, I can just speak on some of that, I mean, you know, like we do have Rhonda and Ms. Ralph Moore, Mr., I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, Mr. Ralph Moore, who's our planner, who's also working with Ms. Bakara on doing some of these things right now, so funding pretty much is all through some of those individuals, already taking care of through MPO, so that's been one of the issues.
Well, that's kind of what I thought when she was talking about the Memphis area, and I thought immediately the MPO.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Were there any other questions?
Yeah, we, we're not playing on size bus, Memphis have, are we, we're smaller?
No, no, sir, not at all, that, that is not.
I, I understand, but no, no, definitely, no.
No, no, sir, there are a lot of options out there, uh, that are in the smaller size, and so what, we're definitely considering something that is gonna be a lot smaller.
And they will be paying, right, I, I missed just a few little of it, they'll be paying for the rides, right?
Yes, sir, there will be a fair structure that goes along with the recommendation.
But the, the structure and the mechanics of this program will be developing over a period of time.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, no buses tomorrow, fortunately.
Yeah, no buses tomorrow.
But every journey starts with a step. So, and this is an important step.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in paper, aye, opposed, the resolution passes?
Which one, okay.
That's the first one, then we have to do the second one, can you give the resolution the number, please?
Resolution number twenty-three forty-one, twenty-three forty-one.
Resolution number is two-three-four-one, will you read R ten?
Mayor, if I may, uh, I did not note who made the motion in second. I don't know if there was one.
Can I get a motion in second?
So moved.
So moved, Chrome and, and Dr. Bruce.
Okay.
All right, that was the one who made the motion, and we got the resolution number, okay, R ten, city attorney?
R ten is resolution of West Memphis City Council authorizing the creation of the City of West Memphis Department of Transportation.
Can I get a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
In discussion? Hearing none, all in paper, aye, opposed, it passes. Thank you, Ms. Bakara.
Thank you.
Want to get a resolution number?
Can I get a resolution number, please?
Resolution number twenty-three forty-two, twenty-three forty-two.
That number is two-three-four-two. All right.
Do you want us to add the parts awaiting to the report time comes?
Uh, it's already added.
Where is it?
The, the two resolutions, the chair today in the part of the question. And I have a come up to him permission request, if that's okay. O one?
O one is an ordinance to set forth uniform requirements for direct and indirect contributors into the wastewater collection and treatment system for the City of West Memphis and for other purposes.
Mayor, may I make a motion to suspend the rules and place it on a second reading?
Second, all in paper, aye, opposed, it's on the second reading.
Second reading of an ordinance to set forth uniform requirements for direct and indirect contributors into the wastewater collection and treatment system for the City of West Memphis and for other purposes.
Mayor, may I make a motion to further suspend the rules and place it on its third and final reading?
Second, all in paper, aye, opposed, the motion's second reading.
This is third reading of an ordinance to set forth uniform requirements for direct and indirect contributors into the wastewater collection and treatment system for the City of West Memphis and for other purposes.
Hearing the red for a third and final time, can I get a motion in second?
So moved.
Second, in discussion?
We're gonna ask Mr. Bakara, he's smiling, ready to go.
Hello again. So, this ordinance is for, it's basically a new sewer use ordinance, um, a little background, uh, as you know, we're expanding our wastewater treatment plant, and we've been in, we've been doing a lot of work with the, uh, State Department of Environmental Quality. Per their recommendation, they had told us that our, our sewer use ordinances were not strong enough, there weren't enough enforcement actions in our sewer ordinances, and that we needed to revise those that are sewer use ordinance, as well as our permit for our industrial users. So as a result of that recommendation, we hired Dr. Larry Moore, who is a environmental engineer, PhD, he used to teach over at the University of Memphis. He's pretty much one of the, um, top minds in, in nationwide in terms of sewer use and, um, wastewater, uh, functioning and, and wastewater treatment plants. So we worked with Dr. Moore to develop this new ordinance, and basically, the long and short of it is, is we're not changing any of our rate structure at all, so there's no change to any of our sewer rates, and there's no impact to any of our residential users. What this ordinance does is it sets forth all of the discharge that our large industrial customers can discharge into our wastewater treatment plant. The whole purpose of this ordinance is to make sure that we're not, that we have enforcement ability, if we have entities that are contributing waste, think pesticides, or hazardous chemicals, or things like that into our wastewater treatment san- system. We wanna protect the biology, the biology of our wastewater treatment plant, and we wanna make sure that we have the ability to enforce action against these folks that are putting that into our wastewater treatment plant. I wanna say that we don't have any concern with any of our current industrial users and our permit holders, but we're passing an ordinance that will check all the boxes for us, and that will enable us, if we have any other entities that come into West Memphis, that we can address those issues as they come up.
I guess my only question is, how would you know, I guess you have some kind of system to determine, uh, the various businesses and who's dumping what? So that's what I want to know, how would you know who's dumping those things?
We absolutely do, um, so it depends on what type they, what they contribute, so when they apply for service, they have to let us know what they're going to be putting into our wastewater treatment plant. Based on the volume that they, of waste that they give us and what they are, it will be determined whether or not they have to be a permit holder. So we have one significant industrial user, and that's based on volume, and that's Coca-Cola Consolidated, they are largest contributor to our wastewater system. And, and then we have five other users across the city that are industrial permit holders. So those, there are requirements that they have to follow, they have to have, they have to monitor their flow, so we have to know how much they're putting into the system at any given time, they have to, we have to, we do sampling to monitor what they tell us they're going to be putting in to verify that that's what they're putting in. We check the pH as it comes into the system, and we check the content of what's in it. In this ordinance, it also talks about what we would call local limits, and there's, uh, I believe it's forty-four different, um, metals or chemicals that could go in, and there are limits that are set forth in this ordinance, that say they cannot exceed these amounts, or they will be in violation of the ordinance, and then Director of Environmental Quality for the utility can start an enforcement action against them until they remedy the problem. So, the other thing is, is, so after we developed the ordinance and the local limits calculation, so the utility commission approved both of those, we did send both of those to the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality, they read over them, and they approved them as well, so these have already been approved by the state, as soon as city council approves them, then they'll be, they'll be set forth in the ordinance, and we can move forward with that.
Being in a different position and a former life, you're testing, the utility testing of wastewater that's coming out of the facility has been going on for, what, forty years?
At, at least, yeah, but, but under this, so some of the guidelines of the testing, and what we test for are more stringent under this ordinance, so we're not exceeding, we, we don't wanna have, be punitive toward any of our businesses, we wanna make sure our business can operate, but we also wanna make sure that they're not contributing anything hazardous to our wastewater treatment plant, or anything that's gonna jeopardize the functioning of the wastewater treatment plant. At the end of the day, if we, if we have someone discharge a large amount of chemical or, uh, mineral into the wastewater treatment plant, and it, and it damages the biology of the plant, we won't be able to treat anybody's wastewater until we can resolve that issue, so we wanna have an ordinance in place that, and. Sorry about, if that was me, but we wanna have an ordinance in place that enables us to, um, monitor that and enforce that, so that we can control what's coming into our wastewater treatment plant.
And it's all random testing.
I'm sorry?
It's, it's all random testing.
It's not random, um, so, for example, uh, like our significant industrial user, they're, we test them weekly, right, and it's not random, I mean.
What I mean is the, 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 the facility owners, operators don't know. When the utility's coming by to pull samples.
No, they, they can't, they can't put something, they can't do something because they know that we're coming.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, so thi- this enables us to, uh, to ensure the integrity of what they tell us they're putting into our wastewater system, it, it, it's not in, it, it's actually not in our wastewater system. It also talks about, you know, oils, you know, we have, we have users that sometimes put actually motor oil into our wastewater system, this helps us to be able to stop that happening.
You explain everything so well, thank you.
Thank you.
Were there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in paper, aye, opposed, it passes, will you give that ordinance a number, please?
Number twenty-seven eleven, twenty-seven eleven.
That number is two-seven-eleven. O two, city attorney?
O two is an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the installation of water and sewer mains to the Google Data Center, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Mayor, if I may make a motion, suspend the rules and place it on a second reading.
So moved.
Second, all in paper, aye, opposed?
Second reading of an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the installation of water and sewer mains to the Google Data Center, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Mayor, if I may ask, we suspend the rules and place it on its third and final reading?
So moved.
Second, all in paper, aye, opposed?
Third reading of an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the installation of water and sewer mains to the Google Data Center, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
You hear what they read for the third and final time, can I get a motion? You hear it there, red for the third and final time, can I get a motion in second?
So moved.
Is there any discussion on that one? Google paying for it, so-
Well, that's the main thing, is, is to make sure that our citizens know.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so just, just to be clear, I, I, I don't typically like to waive competitive bidding, because I do believe in competitive bidding, but in this particular instance, this, the, the decision to waive competitive bidding was actually at the request of Google. So, to install the water and sewer mains into the property, what this water and sewer service is for is for, they call it Trailer City. And it's basically the office and construction offices for all of the workers that are there to build the, the new data center. At any given time, there'll be about a thousand people working out of what they call Trailer City. They're gonna, they're, they already have trailers in there, and they're gonna start moving folks in. So, basically, at their request, what we did was, we approached a contractor that the utility has used many times, they're consistently our low bidder. We asked them to give us a price that was within the timeframe that Google had set forth. And Argo Construction is that, that contractor, they came back, they could meet the timeline, and they came back, and the bid is associated, or it's attached to the, to the, the ordinance. And it was basically one point seven million dollars to install the water main and the sewer main into the site. This is not, it, we're going to be using it for Trailer City originally, but it is the water and sanitary sewer service for the data center, it will be used for that once the data center is under construction. So, we took that, that bid amount to Google, they approved it, and they requested that we waive competitive bidding and proceed forward with construction so it can meet their construction timelines. So the construction timeline, they need this water main and sewer main installed by October thirty-first.
Mayor, if I may. Of course, it does not include pumps, motors, generators, you have a ballpark on what it'll be to finish out that project?
So, the pumps, motor, and electric controls, we backed those out becau, at Google's request, because they wanted to proceed with the water and sewer main construction. So what we will be doing is, we'll be constructing the, the, the water and sewer main and the wet wells for the lift station, so that the folks can get in and start doing their work, and we can move the, the wastewater out. We will put a, an auxiliary external pump in the wet well and pump into the sewer main until we can get the motors, electric controls. And the reason that we broke that out was because of long lead times from a procurement standpoint. When we do buy those things, they will be, the cost for those will be fully covered under a separate agreement by Google, and then they will be installed at that time.
One, one last question, Bob, and it'll be done. For the citizens of our city, will you explain what the wet wells and all of this is gonna be out there, so they know that they're not on our city water system?
Well, for, for part of it, right, so for part of the facility, they are on our city water system. So, for their bathrooms and lunchroom and, and fire control, that will all be on the city water system. Any water that they use for the cooling of the servers or any of that, that will be actually a different method, it will not be the potable water from the city. So they will not impact potable water at all. We have actually engaged an engineering firm to do a study on the aquifer for us, to make sure that we have adequate water resources on, in the aquifer to continue to provide the water for the City of West Memphis, and they have come back, and they said that not only the Google development, but even any of the other new developments that are going on in the city, that we have adequate resources, and we will have adequate resources for the next hundred years. And, from the aquifer that we draw our water from.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all the paper I.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, will you get that ordinance a number?
Ordinance number twenty-seven twelve, twenty-seven twelve.
Thank you.
That ordinance number is twenty-seven twelve, thank you. Also, can I get a motion in second for the, uh-
What's that, section two?
Section two, Perry.
So, so moved.
Second. This is mercy clause, all the paper I.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes as well. Permission request, our permission for Mayor McLendon to purchase a mobile command center from LDV Customs Specialty Vehicles. Director Rolfe, will you make your way forward? I know, gonna be some questions on that, actually, I had the opportunity to fly out with him, and we went and looked at the, this vehicle. And he has been on a true witness street, because he got seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, as well as just got a new grant for what, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand for this vehicle as well. So pretty much through grants, he's pretty much paid it off, there's a little small sum left over that Torrey has found secure, and with you all's blessing, we can get this mobile command center, but I'll let you get a little more information to the council about it.
Sure, the mobile command center was originated off the FY twenty-four Port Security Grant Program. You know, before we even attempt to apply for a grant like that, we understand that it's a seventy-five twenty-five type of grant, so we will call finance and see if we have that, that amount of money. I knew that this vehicle was gonna be in the one million dollar range, so that's what I applied for, and they were very gracious, the federal government, the, the Port of Memphis, Sector Lower, the Coast Guard, they gave us that million, so it's a hundred, it's a one million dollar grant. We have seven hundred and fifty thousand federal money, two hundred and fifty thousand of city money. We're just shy over a million dollars on this vehicle. You know, the vehicle, I had a vision in mind when we began this project, it's been well over a year that we've been trying to find a vendor, get it, you know, just get something that's gonna work for us, that, that is in our price range. I was humbled when we got to Wisconsin, because what I wanted was not what we could afford. So we, we chopped it down a little bit, but it's obviously got a lot of special security features on it that we don't want to share with the public, you know, just for the nature of the business. But, it's gonna be a vehicle we're very proud of, it's gonna be very good for this area. You know, a vehicle like this, I know of two of in the state, the Arkansas State Police has one, and the Arkansas Department of Emergency Management has one. So we have a big football game tomorrow night, Marion versus West Memphis hometown showdown. Every year, since I've been in this role, that I've tried to get a mobile command center from the state, the state fair starts tomorrow, so both of their assets are deployed to the state fair, you know, obvi, for obvious reasons. So, Shelby County Office of Emergency Management has been very generous the last couple of years, actually, the la, this is year three that they've loaned us their mobile command center. Very hopeful that this is the last year that we'll have to borrow from them, because we will have our own asset, you know, after, after this approval, if you see fit.
Yeah, of course.
Yes, sir.
Is that what they have over there now? For the game?
What you-
Something from Memphis.
Uh, over there right now?
Yes.
No, that's a, that's a, that's a lift, that's a sky, a watchtower, it's another very cool asset that Memphis P.D. loaned us this go-round, that we're gonna try out and see, see how useful it is. That, that unit will allow us to put an officer in the, the sky watchtower, raise it up in the air, and allow it to work in conjunction with some other assets we have deployed in the area. I liked, I liked what she said a while ago about a journey requiring a first step, very, very awesome, might borrow that myself. So this is a journey, I hope this first step y'all take right now.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate y'all.
Any other questions for Director Rolfe? All right, hearing none, all the paper I.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. First step. All right. Second, we're gonna go to charity days. Councilman Murray, did you want to add your charity day?
I wanted to do six hundred to Maddox Elementary.
Did any other council person want to give something to charity? To anyone else, I would ask, did any, any other council person want to give their charity dollars to anyone?
We'll get an updated report for everybody.
I don't know what my toll there is.
Just telling, I need to get with Ms. Perry and get everybody an updated report.
I asked her to do that, but she's been busy.
She can work another twenty-four hours, it's okay.
All right. So, that's the only one that's given to Maddox's Councilman Murray, he giving six hundred dollars, can I get a motion in second to approve that?
So moved.
What's second?
Second.
All the paper I.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it is approved. Communities who have met, parks? Police?
Police, yes.
Far? Public Works? Public Works. Does Far meet? It haven't. Budget?
Did not have a quorum, sir.
Utility? You heard his report, that report is up to date, but I'll give you something in writing a little later. Airport? Temple Commerce?
They met yesterday.
Yeah, they met, yeah, I was there at that one. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and start with the Parks.
Yes, sir, we already made the motion to, Mr. Director Jones, if you'll come up with your proposal and what we discussed a little bit earlier.
Good afternoon. So basically, on the request to waive the competitive bidding, there are eight areas of plumbing that we've had to deal with already. Seven of them were within the bond for Tilden Rogers, so I, I'll tell you about the seven. The pond needed to be capped off, the plumber has already taken, taken care of that. The old water fountains that were in the center of the concession stand area had to be removed and capped off, the plumber has already taken care of that. The concession stand, all of the water, restrooms have already been taken care of. The umpire's room, that has a brand-new bathroom with a shower in it and toilets, has already been taken care of. The splash pad, underground work that had to be done to get the splash pad running, the same plumber has taken care of that. So basically, what took place, everything I've named was within the bond. The old concession stand, that had the restrooms in it, the blue building, was not part of the bond. Therefore, we had to go out, we will have to go out and bid it, if we do that, it's gonna take a while to get that done. What I'm requesting is that we use the same guy to come in and take care of that one restroom, so we can open, hopefully, by the eighteenth of this month. If not, I understand, but he came in six thousand dollars over the better bid. So, that's what I'm-
You did bid it, right?
Yes, I did bid it, yes. So, I did contact them, they agreed that they can come in at the lowest bid, match it. They said it will not be a problem.
What was that lowest bid?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, okay. And we'll have that in writing, or?
Yes, you'll have, I can put it in your hand later today or tomorrow. Oh, that will be emailed to me today. And I can get it to, I can send it to one of you.
City Attorney? Your thoughts on that?
You know, we're not, really not waiving competitive bidding, okay, we're really not waiving competitive bidding. What you, you're doing is, you're, you're basically selecting a bidder, and so it's not really a request to waive competitive bidding, because it's been competitively bid, okay? I think you're just asking the council to accept the second bid if it's down to the lowest bid, if it comes down to the lowest bid, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, just making sure. Does that answer the question, or?
Yes, sir.
Because you're using the same plumber, right?
Yes, that's, that's what I was trying to do, since he's already on site, I just want to use the same guy so we can get this project finished. The last phase is the restroom and concrete being poured, and then we will be finished with Tilden Rogers.
I make a motion that we accept that bid based on what Director Jones has said to us.
Second. All the paper I.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Yes, that's part of the final stage. And one more thing too, counseling, get your arms loose, we are doing not so much as a ribbon cutting, but we're doing what we call the first pitch. So, I plan to have you all on the fields with your first pitch. So, look forward to it on the eighteenth. Yeah, we'll move you in close, don't worry.
If it's from a registered mound, my shoulder, I can get the-
Got a question?
Yes, sir.
Y'all got Paul in good shape? Now, Jim Jackson, we give, A and P give y'all the stage, and I've seen him cleaning it out the other day. Have y'all talked to him about that, moving that stage out?
Yes, it belongs to us now, what we're doing is trying to find the best place to store it. And the good thing about Tilden Rogers, we're gonna put cameras up, so we can monitor everything by cell phone. So I'm thinking after we finish all of the road work out there, then we'll place it out there, that's where it'll stay.
Okay, did all the work get done on it?
Yes, based on Jim Jackson, everything had been completed. Yes, sir. Any more questions?
No.
All right, thank y'all.
All right, thank you. That concludes your, your minutes, Ms. Momma.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. Police?
Uh, the police commission met Monday at noon, and these are the topics of discussion. Budget Committee Chair Tracy Cat was present for the year-to-date police budget through, or presented the year-to-date three, police budget through August, which represented all, almost seventy-five percent of the total yearly budget with four months remaining. The majority of the line item accounts were well over budget, especially the overtime. Discussion continued into improvements in the budget process, understanding of the budgeting process, correctly coding invoices, monitoring and controlling inline budget items, et cetera. Also, the discussion continued into the possibility or opportunity for a person, full-time, part-time, or outside source to assist in monitoring and reporting the budget status to the department on a current basis. There will be a software training session scheduled for next week, the date and the time had not been announced, is that right, Council Cat?
I have not received the confirmation, correct.
Okay. Uh, that's an opportunity not only for our police department, but also for others that want to go in and learn more on the software system. The next discussion was regarding the setting of the guidelines as to how the West Memphis Police Department and Jones Emergency Management Consulting Firm, and I put AKA Jones Security, because that's a little shorter, will interact. Assistant Chief Presley and Major Taylor will discuss this ish, this concern with Chief Campbell. The last item discussed was an age-old concern as to attracting and retaining good police officers. As there are a hundred and thirty officers budgeted, but only forty-five positions are currently filled, and with the new industry growth that's coming into our city, that makes the commitment for safety renewed. And that concludes the report.
All right. We'll move down to Public Works.
West Memphis Public Works, committee met on October the seventh, twenty-twenty-five at two P.M. Things on the agenda was to prove the minutes for September of twenty-twenty-five done. There was no old business, no new business. Fleet report, front-end loader, three operational, zero down, rear-end loaders, two operational, zero down, one-on-bandit, three operational, zero down, grapple trucks, four operational, zero down. Public rate, Public Works Director report, recycle total, seven thousand four hundred and sixty pounds, tires, there were six hundred, garbage, trash dump, eighteen thou, eighteen hundred and seventy-five points, nineteen tons, monthly cost, sixty-two thousand, twenty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. Cars purchased, five, cars stolen, replaced, four, cars replaced and/or fixed, ten. There was no engineer report, Mayor, we want to thank you for participation of Officer Ford and our code enforcement. We had a lot of conversation and information that we were, were sharing in that meeting, thank you so very much, and we hope it continues.
Thank you, I, I'm glad-
Thank you. I'm glad I wanted to speak. Do you want to go?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, we are doing something different in code enforcement. Um, not only, you know, I'm building now a code enforcement team because, you know, by the ordinance, we can hire, I was given permission to hire up to three code enforcement. I'm putting together a team that's gonna really work in the areas that really need the support. I mean, I love seeing Dr. Bruce, but I hate when you, you know, you have to deal with what we have to deal with within our community. So we're gonna definitely have, make sure he now have the support that he needs to, to get these things done in many of you all, um, areas. We want to make sure that our city is cleaned up because we know we're a better city and we rise, and we got a lot of great things going on. So I want to make sure that for now, you're gonna definitely have someone that can give you all that report and what they are doing. And we're gonna be meeting the needs that what code enforcement was here to do.
Well, Mayor, I could say, uh, I truly appreciate him because, uh, as I've stated before, we have a lot of issues in Ward Two. Lots, lots of issues. And, uh, you all have been very supportive, and it's truly appreciated. And, uh, I had a question for Councilman Murray. More or less, uh, I'm hoping I've talked to, to Mr. Slaughter, and there have been some, some areas in Ward Two where we have, the roads are really bad. And I'm gonna go ahead and say, uh, first hundred block of South Twelfth, if there's any way we could get, get someone to look at it because it is, is, people are holding me accountable.
I understand. Let me, let me answer that. First, I'm gonna say real quick, council, you all get prepared to start getting a lot of complaints, not all, but some, from the people in our community because when, when our new code enforcement get ready to be rolled out, they gonna really make some noise. Now, see, the Turner heads told me, Officer Ford, you gotta come down just a little, just a little bit.
I appreciate you.
Well, we're, I'm just joking, which we definitely, you know, we're gonna do. But actually, on, um, the roads, we getting ready to do another one point one million dollars in overlay. You remember, we had two point two million. You all did, chose to do one point one last year, and we got another one million to do. But if you're coming up, definitely, I picture a street. Give a ward in Pacific to make sure that that street is one of the one that will be considered, so we can try to get that thing going.
Okay, because-
And, and also, uh, Councilman Cat, uh, I did give, uh, Mr. Slaughter, definitely what we're gonna do next week. There's a bunch of little areas, like the, the street work was done, they need to have been overlaid, not over, uh, concrete and whichever was needed. They are getting together because right now, you called out the concrete truck. You got to have at least three, three yards. So definitely, some of those areas probably no bigger than this little section in front of me, so he getting all those together. So he be hitting them all over the city. So next week, you all proceed, those things taking care.
And I guess my last thing is, uh, there are some areas where the street has to be cut because it's lumped up. And so we don't have the machine to cut this part out to refix it. So hopefully, we can put that in that one point million.
We all have the concrete saw.
I think we got there because I know it was a section on, on Clement Road that you'd have a, a bump, and it was cut and smoothed out.
Well, I spoke with him, and Mr. Slaughter didn't say we didn't have it. So-
Shocked we don't have a concrete saw.
Let me, let me, let me, let me, let me give him on that.
Okay, so it's really needed. It's really needed.
Oh, I'm talking about streets. Clement from Broadway to Service Road, uh, that whole street. I, I hear it every week.
Well, y'all, you all reach out to, uh, Ward Wimish and Pacific, and they'll put y'all on the, on the list. Any other streets that may be you all's ward, please, please reach out. Uh, was those, did we forget someone? Parks, police, Public Works? Any other committee man?
It was just first of the month, so I don't think there have been any.
All right, we're gonna, I had no, no appointments. Uh, I did have a few presentations. I'm gonna mix my presentations up with my announcements. First of all, you all know that we had a big, uh, groundbreaking announcement here in West Memphis, and I'm, I'm happy to announce Google to our community. And some things that I hadn't been able to say to the public, and I'm talking to the people of West Memphis, this is a four-billion-dollar investment in our community. You had, uh, Miss, uh, Governor Sanders who was here as well. You had, uh, Ms. Ruth Parry and Mr. Jim Anderson, executives at Google. You had also Ms. Andrew and Ms. Laura from Entergy, they were here as well. You had, uh, our utility commu, uh, GM, Bob Atkins here because they all worked together to put the things in place to make sure that we have what we need to make this announcement. And I want to let the people know that one of the things they announced for the city of West Memphis was a twenty-five-million-dollar, uh, incentive, uh, over the next five years, which should be given five million a year. Correct my numbers. Laura is here. If I ain't doing something, stand up real quick. I'm not saying it right, but they giving us over five million dollars a year. That would go toward our utility rates. And I know that's one of the things that you all were concerned about is our utility rates was growing up. But actually, five million dollars is gonna be going to the people of West Memphis. So we already got the second lowest utility rate. We should be the first lowest utility rate because most of those funds would be going to help that as well as other things that need to be done within the utilities would definitely be a help. Also, it's gonna produce over three hundred jobs. It's gonna have a couple thousand construction jobs that's gonna be coming. That's gonna be also an asset. As well as the city of West Memphis, once completely built out, we will start receiving six point two five million dollars for, I guess, the life of this project. Is I correct, Bob? Exactly. As long as they have a power, I'm sure in thirty, twenty-eight, thirty years, they gonna ask for another power, so. As long as we continue getting that money, that would be money that we'll be able to use for infrastructure, public work, I mean, public safety, and, uh, quality of life pieces. So that'd be something great for our city. As well as, um, they're also gonna assist us with getting broadband internet throughout our city to much-needed communities. So that's gonna be major. So this one announcement is life-changing. When you bring a four-billion-dollar company to your community, it's gonna do some different thing. And they really want to be a great partner in this community. That's one of the things that we talked about. So I'm just talking about the big numbers, but there's so many different things that Laurie Hare has met with me, and she want to definitely talk about and do anything to help this community, you know? We got some options, like pre-K to our community. Can you imagine? I know you, you in education, so you also. And you helping our kids, there's, I'm, I'm thinking pre-K, is that three to five or, or four years old to five, somewhere in there?
Oh, no, pre-K sometimes it's two, three if you're potty trained.
Well, possibly, yeah, at that time. And then you able to help kids starting to read. Because a lot of the things that were, I was telling Laurie, and we asked them, when do they look at, uh, how they start to judge whether, whether their clientele, or not just clientele, but their future workers on the company? They say in the third grade. And if you look at, one of the things I've been speaking to our superintendent about, if you look at the latter grade in our schools outside of recently, Dr. Bruce, I, I let you kind of speak on it, but around Ds and Ls and a couple Cs at our high school, the high schools, the C. We just want to do everything we can to help better prepare our young people. So Google is gonna come in and do a lot of things on that level. Also, I want, if you didn't know, the city of West Memphis, all the new owner of Melibrew, uh, go, Project Club. So we are the new owners of that. I want to speak on, we have a boots-on-the-ground cleanup list. It's gonna be, uh, October the eighteenth, starting at nine o'clock. We trying to get everyone, city employees, fraternities, sororities, churches, church members. We got many of our students at the schools who are getting those community service hours for possible scholarships or college, uh, qualifications. And anyone that want to be involved, churches, we definitely want everyone to be involved. We gotta back clean your community. But most of the time, I want to say is that I want to encourage the people of West Memphis, clean up your own stuff. I want to say it different, but I seen Dr. Bruce looking at me, saying, what you, clean up your own, because if you clean up your own house, your own property, then we shouldn't have to be out there cleaning up. But I know some areas we gonna have to do that. I mean, I know, uh, uh, Councilwoman Muhammad does it every year, and she understand what, what we going through. So definitely, we want to make sure that everyone, if you take the chance and start to clean up your own property, and then what we gonna bring to the table, we gonna have code enforcement out there, we gonna have sanitation, and let them get four hours overtime. Uh, grapple trucks, we'd be out there picking up everything. As well, if we got the large dumpsters, it's gonna be out for that whole week. So it is not no excuse for you have all this stuff around your, um, your house, and you need to get rid of it, get rid of it. That's the time to do it because after then, you gonna start calling your councilmen, saying that they on you for no reason, and they not gonna be on you.
I would, I would like to say, not cutting you off. Uh, I would like to say that some people have been concerned about boots-on-the-ground taking over Keep West Memphis Beautiful. I mean, I welcome what you're doing. You and I have talked, and I most certainly will be there bright and early, uh, on the nineteenth, is that what it is?
Eighteenth.
On the eighteenth. Um, but Keep West Memphis Beautiful is through the Keep America Beautiful Foundation. And what Mayor McClennan is doing is just an asset, and I thank you. I thank you for the help. Because I don't have, by you being mayor, I don't have the resources to give the sanitation workers four hours of overtime to come out and help me. But now here go Lefty. She, she is everything we need. I'm telling you that now, and then some. So what I would like to say is all of those who are concerned about, uh, Keep West Memphis Beautiful, I applaud you, and I thank you so much for your concern. But this is not taking over anything. Everything that is being done is enhancing, uh, what we do in the city of West Memphis. And as he was saying, if we just clean our own property, it would be so much better. But I know we're not gonna do that. So we have these various volunteers and organizations. And I just thank you so much. And I've already talked, and I told him that I'm gonna take part of it. All of you, uh, who support me, if you in the Keep West Memphis Beautiful process, if you want to come out that morning, uh, you can. I'm gonna have my Keep West Memphis Beautiful T-shirt on, or either Breast Cancer Awareness T-shirt. I don't want yours this time. But save me one for later, okay? But thank you so much, Mayor McClennan. So I just wanted to say, we're all in this working together, and I just applaud you and all that you are trying to do to make our city better, and thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need to do it quarterly.
I know, I know a cleaner city is usually a safer city, so we just want, you know, I, I just look at so many people coming to West Memphis. We want them to come in, and, you know, it's been so long, there was this little stigma. If you come in on the west end of town, then you supposed to be on this side. But I want people to come off that Broadway east end of town and be like, where? They don't know what part of the city in because all of it's clean and we all just working. Well, in fact, I, you know, when you come across, coming out of Memphis, and you get on Broadway, right? And you can see that yard there, business, they got all them old trucks and toilets and stuff on the outside. I want you to go by and see them. All right.
It's depressing.
So definitely, we just, we just want to keep our city clean. That's the mindset. We want to get the mindset that we all working together to keep our city clean. Then I want to talk about-
Why don't you write an ordinance, Mayor?
Mayor?
Why don't you write an ordinance and do it quarterly?
Sure, definitely. That, that's, that's a good idea.
Here's the deal. We have, Keep, Keep America Beautiful is doing, it's done twice a year. I didn't do it this fall because he had his boots on the ground, so we can do it twice, and then the city can, uh, Mayor Mark McClennan boots on the ground if that's something that we want to discuss. I'm not saying that's anything that's set in stone at this particular time. It's just a thought.
Well, you know, there's never too much cleaning.
Sure isn't.
Not for West Memphis.
Nowhere.
Then lastly, I have, uh, two, two quick things. National Night's Out was a very good success. We had Tuesday. We went to a lot of communities. I'm, I'm telling you all, if you don't go by Councilwoman Helen Harris and Willis Monday and them, uh, uh, National Night's Out, you missing the treat. I mean, oh, they had the live band outside. They had the food, barbecue. I don't eat the pork, but they, the chicken and, and the peach cobbler off the chain. If you don't go by their, their house, that's where the party be at. And that's, that's what it's about. I think all of the individuals who participated was great. We had some on, on South Main Street all the way to, uh, perimeter, uh, Ms. Broadway, as well as, uh, Ms. Curlin Mills and them back there. It just, the Ms., uh, Deborah Rogers, can't forget her, Mr. Darren Chrisley. Everyone just stepped up and had a, a good event, and it was great for the, you know, our, our National, National Night's Out had turned into a community night's out because it's not just policing, it's, it's far, it's, uh, uh, planning, it's, uh, it's all about the utility department. It's, it's everyone. Uh, so it was a great event that we had. I mean, we probably have to cut it down so I can make them all, or we just got to get it so much bigger. Or we can start to get more people there.
And make us in the middle because we seniors, you know? Y'all always make us last. We senior citizens.
But you know, I did, I did, uh, Ms. Bow gave the list, and I was just following it.
You tell Ms. Bow she need to put us in the middle because we never get a T-shirt.
Because I wasn't driving. You know, I, I make sure the council people get a T-shirt, that's definitely.
Mayor, Boots on the Ground, I heard the fire department is cooking for us.
Matter of fact, yes, they have a safety day that same day. So we gonna meet at the food truck park up there on Broadway. And then what's gonna start then? After we get through doing the Boots on the Ground, we all shifting to Tilden Rogers Park. So the, well, the fire department on their safety day. So they have everyone out there. They have the DJ, the music, everything. So I'm looking for everyone to be a part of it. And then the last thing, guys, our South Loop is almost complete via Google, and we looking at doing the, you know, you know, when we start to open up bridges and different things like that, we do a big parade. We, we've been working on, uh, South Loop for how long? Since nineteen ninety?
Back in the eighties.
It was ninety-two, yeah. Well, probably planned in the eighties. So, but we almost complete with that. So, yeah. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I wasn't even in high school then. So, so definitely, we, we almost complete with that. So we got some great things going on in our city. But most important, I want you all, we lost a very important person within our community over the last couple of days, and definitely want to, to show her family much love. I mean, she had worked with Carrie Praceto so much with our animal shelter. We lost her husband who done so much work within our community, and that person is Ms. Curlin Seacrest. She passed three days ago, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, so definitely, she was a big advocate for the animals. She done a lot with there. And you know that the, uh, new animal, uh, control center is going to be named the Nest, and with Curlin and Nest Seacrest Animal Shelter. So definitely, you know, I want her family to know to be praying for them, uh, and we here for them if they need be. Because they, her and her husband together, they done a lot for our community. Also, I ask you all to keep the, uh, Leroy Miller family in, uh, your prayers as well. He actually had a massive heart attack in his sleep, and that, that was, that was tough for many, many, many people in our family. He was close to mine as well. So just keep our people in our prayers and, and keep those families lifted up. So I had no announcements. I do have a one citizen request, uh, for Mr. Nathaniel Johnson at five thirteen South Roseline Drive. Is he here? Come for him. And what he's applying for is a certificate of public convenience to operate a non-medical emergency transportation. I want to explain this to you. The council had received your package, and then in the next two weeks, they will vote on it. But you want to address them now and let them know anything about your business.
Okay. That's last time. I don't think many was here last time, but we had news. Uh, how was it?
Yeah, you was here. Well, you, you, you can really get a vote today. So do any council persons have any, uh, any questions for them or any rejections or anything?
You said it's a non-medical emergency?
Non-emergency medical transportation.
Non-emergency. Explain that, non-emergency.
So it's for those, the elderly population, those that are disabled. So we just recently opened up a behavioral health center here where we service those who started with substance abuse, mental health. They need medical transportation. And so I ran across a lot of issues because we see clients also in St. Francis County where they have no transportation. And to make sure we get them to their various appointments, we want to be a resource and make sure they get to their appointments. So that's why, in order to do, uh, non-emergency medical transportation, you gotta be able to tran, transport those who are ambulatory. We can transport those who may be which are accessible, but, uh, that's down in the future. Right now, we trying to treat the client and the community if needed.
So how many, you have vans? So how many?
One van currently. Yes, ma'am.
So did you get Medicaid approved?
We, matter of fact, they waiting on me to get approved from here first. Yes, ma'am. That's already in the works.
Well, y'all got our approval. All right. That's good.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second.
Our paper, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Hey, you're a new non-emergency medical transporter in West Memphis.
I sure appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
I see we got some commissioners in the house, Mr. Hay- I see we got some commissioners in the house, Mr. Hayes?
Dr. Robinson? I thought I seen Ms. Patterson with the Parks Department. She was here earlier, yeah. Any other?
There's a Parks Department guy sitting back there, acting all shy.
Oh, Raphael?
Raphael, yes.
Oh, he's a commissioner, he worked for us.
But he's part of it, so, he makes many things happen.
Oh, yeah, also, yeah, Ms. Danielle, she did a commi, Ms. Danielle, come quick, real quick, and give the council an update on the meeting that you just had here the other day, Monday night, what, last night?
Yes, sir, so we started a community engagement initiative, it's called, ma'am? Oh, I'm sorry. So it's a community engagement initiative that was started called the City Neighborhood Partnership Council. And the main purpose of this is to bridge the gap between the community and the local government. It is a resident-led initiative. And so the biggest problem that we ran into was all of these people that live in West Memphis do not even know they're council members. So y'all will hear from me a lot on behalf of them, as well as on last night. So everyone, they are excited, so everyone was, each ward was represented. Or some, it was people there from Ward one, five, four, and everything. So basically, what they're going to be doing is, any issues that they have, they are going to be calling you guys. They're going to be emailing you guys, and if they cannot get you, then they will definitely be getting me, and then I will be contacting you because they have different issues that they have, they live right on their block, that they want to see satisfied. And so it's our job to help serve the community. But this initiative is put back on the community to do their part. So each one of these individuals that were there, they're basically liaisons. So they're helping spread as far as information, they'll be at the council meetings, they'll be at, you know, various events, anything that's going on, they would be like the liaisons to help get the positive word and the correct information out to the citizens and the residents of the city of West Memphis instead of all so much hearsay and so much social media. Banja, this is not a group that is to bash or anything like that. We looking for results, issue solution oriented. So we'll be in contact with every council member. Thank you.
That's fine.
All right, did the council member, y'all have anything y'all want to add? Councilman Corning, this has to be a record in it. This has to be a record in it.
I know.
Two-hour council meeting. All right, well, can I get a motion is second to adjourn? Second.
I pay by? Oppose?
Thank y'all.